Hello and welcome to the Stoughton Godfather Show. I'm your host, Peter Mantrusco. And my first guest tonight is Lauren...
Morris.
Morris. Geez, it's tough to get old. And she's running for one of the seats on the board of Selectmen. Now, I'm gonna start off the show by saying, in Stoughton, we have a lot of nepotism going on. Five new jobs. What are they? And I hear they're made for specific people. And do you think this is right?
So, from what I understand, there's positions that have been merged together. And then, there's been other jobs that have been added.
These are five new positions.
Yeah.
And the word is, they're for specific people.
No, I had a conversation. All I can say is, I had a... As you know, I'm not a sitting Select Board member. But I have met with many people. And I met with Tom Coulter. And he described the situation and how they're still in budget. I do disagree with the communications job that they've added.
I gotta get to that. Alright, so...
You're asking me to answer the question?
You're a yes on that, then?
A yes on what?
Yeah, on the question I just asked?
No, not necessarily. I don't think it's a black and white question.
Alright. I assume you know all the five who they all are connected to. So, I don't think yes or no. I don't know if you know who they're connected to or not. So, it's either yes or no.
Connected to as a person, you mean?
Yeah, these five positions are all connected to somebody.
Yes, there's two that I know that are definitely connected to.
Alright, so it's a yes, you're saying?
That I do know, that there are some jobs that are connected to.
Alright, one is the new jobs is created as central purchasing. And she's done that job for many years. She's run it very well. And the second one is for a wellness and fitness person. I don't know really what that does and what it's gonna accomplish. So, you for something like that? You know, if you know anything about it, so... And the third one, this one really gets me. It's, I call it, "Truth and Information." New town website, so the public can go and find what's going on in the town. Good or bad?
I... It's not necessarily good. It's not necessarily bad. It's a waste, I feel. I think that the departments can communicate with the people. There's already a website. Any communications could take place on that. They can have a certain person assigned in the departments to communicate to the public. I just think it's a waste of money.
I agree. Alright, and the other... The follow-up to that question is, I want to ask things. Would it be cheaper to let the town people know what's going on by one? Facebook? Two, Stoughton News? Three, Stoughton Enthusiast? Four, Town Crier? Five, the Suburban Shopper? Let's say it costs $12,000 a year, like $1,000 a month to advertise. Or, the other one would be number six. All department heads do a weekly show on SMAC to let them know what's going on with their departments. And cheaper than paying somebody $70,000 plus dollars a year, plus benefits. So, what do you think?
So, I think the best way to do it would be have a weekly show. But I don't think that would work for many people.
For the department heads?
Yeah, if they have to come here and they have their home lives and their work lives. It might be too much. That would ultimately be the best. But if you... If I had to choose from the other, the others? Do I get just one?
Yeah, no. You're a yes or no to all of them, yeah.
Okay, so, people... I find that people are really interactive on Stoughton News and Stoughton Enthusiast. Facebook is good, but it's kinda hard because of the way it is. And you can lose... You can lose your position as... Like, if you were following up on something, that post may disappear. I think it's easier to find on Stoughton News and Stoughton Enthusiast. I don't necessarily know if people read the Suburban as much as some people think they do.
Well, let's put it this way. It gets to every house. And I'm sure a lot of the people, especially the elder people, they'll look forward to...
The seniors?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely the seniors, for sure.
So, anyways, all they're put together would be a lot cheaper than $70,000.
I agree. I think there's so many different ways to communicate. You don't need a position to do it.
Yeah, alright. I forgot to read something when I... At the very beginning, to explain nepotism. "The practice among those with power of influence of favoring relatives, friends, or associates, especially by giving them jobs." And basically, the way I interpret it and hearing from reliable people, that's what's going on.
That's what's happening, from what I understand, too. There's two positions, actually three, where it's...
Well, three are filled. There's two more out there. I don't know what they are.
Okay.
Okay.
But the three that I am aware of, definitely it's connected to a person in the leadership government.
Yeah. Okay, now, at the Selectmen's meeting, a couple of meetings back, the town manager was gonna address his objectives. So, the Select Board meeting, no discussion if he met his objectives. He brought the subject up and no one raised any questions, only Mr. Gito. His question was, "I want to ask..." Asking... "I wanna ask here, here. I'll knock on your office door and ask in privacy. And I, in the public, would like to know what the objectives were and were they public... And in a public forum." Otherwise, they're doing this behind closed doors. And it should be done at the meeting, even though they've done it behind closed... It should be out in the open, let everybody know. But I kinda feel kinda odd that Mr. Gito would say... The only question he had was, he doesn't wanna ask it there, but he wants to knock on his door and talk to him in private. Which, you know...
Which is a problem, I feel.
Yeah, it is.
And I feel, too, that the Select Board, it seems like they're all on the same page all the time.
Yes.
Intermittently, you'll get someone that says something. But it's almost like they already know what they're gonna communicate to the public. And I... There's just something up about that. I don't think it's... I think the transparency is definitely... Transparency is not there. It's... There should be more conversation. There should be more questions from the Select Board. Getting down to the nitty-gritty of whatever is in front of them.
Definitely. Well, I guess I'm going too fast. Does that say 11:16?
11:15.
Oh. I thought... I thought we're gonna have enough here. I don't know. Do we have a budget shortfall?
A budget? Well, according... See? According to the town manager, no, they're all... The budget is great. But I don't understand how the budget can be so great with raising, you know, the trash, the water, and all that. And then, in the... In the town, you're getting multiple raises for people, new positions added. So, I think the public has gone through a lot when it comes to changes with the trash, increase in the water. I don't know. People are just kind of soured on what they're hearing that's going on in the town hall.
Yes. Alright. Why do you think we need one superintendent and two assistant superintendents in the water and sewer department? I still don't understand that.
Yeah, I don't understand that either. No, I do not understand that.
Well, seeing we got so much time here, I'm gonna chime in a little bit. I don't wanna, but I don't know. For years, we always worked... One superintendent took care of everything. I thought that was 11... Oh, that's what's left. Oh, okay.
Yeah, 9:54.
Alright, so, I don't understand why we need all these assistant superintendents beyond me. Okay. Now, the fourth one on that is, money saved by 9/11 going to Holbrook. How many years when the state stops giving Stoughton all this extra money?
Three.
Oh, three years it stops?
Three years. Yeah, three years we have to stop paying.
Okay. And what have we done with the money? Did it go into the stabilization fund, or they just blow it?
We haven't received it, I don't believe. I don't believe the town has received it. Like, any, like, money, you know, like... No, I don't... I don't believe that it... And money's been received.
Okay.
All the changes that they're doing is being spent, but...
Hotel... Hotel lost revenue. Town manager says we lost 500,000, 500,000, from room tax. That might be low. Hotels are trifectas in tax revenue. You got room tax, food tax, liquor tax. What do you say?
I agree. We're losing a lot of money and probably more than 500,000.
Okay.
And that's... It's gonna continue. It's not gonna stop.
That's right. Alright, illegal immigrations in Stoughton. Oh, illegal immigrations. Stoughton should refuse anymore and send back the ones we have already. We can't afford them as a town. What do you think?
I agree. I don't think we can send back, though. I think the state controls that.
Yeah, well...
So, like, the state, like... I don't... Our town leadership supposedly did not know that the migrants were coming here and were in the hotels until after. It was already said and done. And so, basically, you know, I did contact Bill Galvin. I did contact Walter Timmeltie. Bill Galvin got back to me. Walter Timmeltie did, too, asking me for my phone number. He hasn't called me back yet, but he's, you know, he'll do that. So, they're supposedly at a loss, too. They've done everything they can, but the governor is just not responding.
This might be the last question here. This is something I just thought about last night after the Finance Committee meeting. Have the state school the illegal immigrants at the hotels and hire state teachers to educate them on the site, and it won't cost us a penny?
That's what I've brought up before. I think that they should provide the teaching staff, you know, the ELL staff, all that. The state sent the people here. They should be taking care of everything. And so, I think the teachers should go to them. I don't think our teachers should be used. I think it should come from the state.
Very good. Alright, we have a budget deficit now. Wait till next year. Illegal immigration families at Sinai Hospital and the loss of over 1 million in real estate tax. How are we going to handle that?
Fight it. People have to get involved, you know? People... You can't just make comments on Facebook and be upset about things. You have to get involved. And you have to come to the meetings. Come to the Select Board meetings. Come to the Finance Committee meetings. You have to get involved and not just judge people, so...
And on the last note on that, but we have all kinds of money for new jobs that we don't need. And yet, the schools are suffering.
Correct.
Okay.
It's wrong.
Now, how much time we got left over there?
Five.
Oh, jeez. I thought it was down to three.
Can I just say something about the whole student thing?
Yeah, you can say whatever you want. Sure, sure.
So, my mom went to... My mom has Alzheimer's. She's been with me. I'm an only child. She's been with me for nine years, taking care of her. She went to adult daycare across from the Sinai, and she absolutely loved it. And she was thriving there, and it's gone. No real notice, not their fault, not the daycare's fault or anything. But we should be encouraging that type of facility for our residents here, for our seniors. And I don't think the priority is the seniors in this town.
No, I agree. It never was. We always tax them to death, and we don't give them any real relief.
People are on fixed budgets, you know? They depend only on their social security tax.
Yeah, and right now, you know, we're short changing the seniors. Our veterans are homeless. We got families last year were homeless for the first time ever.
No health insurance, hungry.
And nobody's doing anything for them. But yet, we're putting all these illegal immigrants up front. Our own veterans, our own children at school. Now, the children at school are gonna suffer for this, 'cause they're being pushed in the back.
Right. And those paraprofessionals that were, like, their jobs are gone, either 14 or 17, from what I understand. And then, we hire three assistant superintendents? No, that shouldn't have happened. They... The paraprofessionals should've stayed, and the superintendent should not have been hired.
Well, that's...
That's administration versus taking care of our kids.
Yeah, that's... That's what I was getting at before. We got all these top-heavy at the schools, and we're top-heavy at the town side, too. So, that there alone could make up millions of dollars for the children. Alright, so, can you use the rest of the three and a half minutes on talking about yourself?
Yeah, I just wanna say, I was born and raised in Stoughton. I am a mom. I'm a wife, a daughter. My mom was raised, born and raised here. My children were born and raised here. I'm a homeowner. I pay taxes, just like everyone else. I really think there needs to be some change on the Select Board specifically. There's just been nothing done. It's the same thing over and over again. And I believe that change comes from the outside. And whenever I say I'm an outsider, that's confusing some people, I know. But what I'm saying is, I'm an outsider regarding the Select Board. And I think the change needs to start. And I would like to be the first person to start that. And I'm hoping, once I'm there, it's gonna encourage other people, maybe of younger ages also, getting involved. Our kids in their twenties. And so, I'm hoping that I will get elected to the Select Board and start some change.
Well, I got two minutes left.
You can ask me more questions, I guess.
Yeah, okay. We did this one.
So, regarding not saving money for the town? I don't understand why there isn't money saved every single year. Like, why are we in trouble with projects that need to be done? Why weren't these things thought of before now? Before, we're, you know, these kids, they knew about the South School before the high school and how bad it was. So, now, we don't have the money, 'cause we've never saved the money. And it has to be done. And then, I don't understand why this wasn't thought of, why we're in this position. And it makes me angry that we're here, because we could've saved the money over all these years and at least had some money to put down for anything that we need, whatever projects we need.
Alright, Lauren. I wanna thank you for coming on the show. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And good luck to you.
Thanks, Peter. Appreciate it.
And I want everybody to know, she takes... She's been taking care of her mother maybe 10 years?
Nine years, yeah.
Nine years. Well, that's close. She's a nurse, but you're still... It's a hard job when you have a mother that's demented. And I known her mother from way back. Lauren and I just met a few years ago, but she's a wonderful woman. Good luck.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. Thank you, Stoughton.
Well, I wanna... I wanna welcome my second guest here on the show, Scott Carrara, sitting on the Board of Selectmen right now. And he's running for, well, I don't know. It's his second time this time, but I don't know. He's been there quite a few times over the years. How many years you been there in total?
I was presently on the Board from 2000 to 2009. And now, this'll be the end of this term here, which was '21.
Okay. Okay, so, we'll get to the questions here. Okay. In Stoughton, we have a whole lot of nepotism going on. Alright, there's five new jobs. What are they? And I hear they're made for specific people. And do you think this is right?
Nepotism goes on everywhere.
I'm not denying that, that's right.
And it's been... I've been a town meeting rep since '88, and I've seen things come to that level where people teach you what that word's all about. And I don't like to pass judgment. I wanna see the best qualified person get in. I understand we created a job that... An HR that deals with the police and fire. That there's... There's a...
Yeah, that's a well of fitness.
When we first got on the Board, we... When I first got on the Board, they were... There was problems, so they were trying to continue on with this guy who... He checks police out and see what they need. And I guess this is what they need. Some men go home, you know, and they might yell at their wives. They might withdraw. Then, the next day, they come in, they're even deeper withdrawn. So, that job, I think, was needed. I know they got a publicist job. I don't understand any of that. I don't know who's gonna get it, 'cause they have to advertise for it.
Alright, so, next... I'm gonna ask you the next question. I asked Lauren the same thing. You're gonna answer yes or no. I assume you know all five who they're all connected to. So, that's yes or no?
Yes.
You do?
Yes. I won't lie. Yes.
Okay. Okay, one was put in centralized purchasing. And I don't know if that was a good move, because she's been there quite a while and has done a fantastic job. The second one you just alluded to is wellness and fitness for the police and fire.
And people think fitness means getting out and running around the building. It's not. It's the well-being of the mind, fitness and that. So, that's what it's geared for. That's why it's there, not in the chat.
Yeah, well, it's got wellness. I mean, that should take care of that part. But the fitness is more to stay your body in shape.
Right.
Alright, the third, which I don't know anybody that's in favor of this thing. The third, "Truth and Information." New town website, so public can go and find what's going on in town. Good or bad idea? And then, I got more to...
Yeah, I think... I think the website that everybody's uploaded and changed, and they had help from Trish. Trish was telling them the right way to do it. There was some pressures from a previous town manager. Tom has turned it around. I think too much information can be a problem. I don't think anything that is embedded should be out there. And I think anything from a department that... If it shouldn't be out, it shouldn't be out. And that's why... I know Mr. Gito's big into getting the website out there. And I... You can't compare websites to town to town. You can't say, oh, I think this town...
I agree.
Our town is geared a different way. And if the town manager says, this is what goes on the website, his person, Trish Chorpshyer, who's in charge of that, and many other things she does...
Yeah, I know. She does a good job.
Yes. And she told them and gave each department, you know, they're okay to do what they want. Because the previous town manager, you know, everybody thought, oh, great, great, great. She wasn't. She was... She was micromanaging people, right down to almost holding a hand around their throats.
Well, what you just said now, basically, I can go along with, because we don't need this other person, because Trish has done a good job at it.
I don't think we need a publicist. I really don't.
But the other thing is, I mean, to get the information out, we have all these freebies to do it. You got Facebook. We got the Stoughton News. We got Stoughton Enthusiast. We got the Town Crier. We got the Suburban Shopper. Let's say it's $12,000 a year, like $1,000 a month. And that's still cheap. And all the department heads on a weekly show on SMAC. They could say what they're doing and, you know, what their projections are. So, it's not costing us anything, 'cause they're already on the clock.
I said that to Robin Grim when she was here, that this is a key place to get information out. That needs to be important. And she chose, oh, let's put it in the water bills. That's what? A quarter a year? You know, you wanna get something out, you put it on here. And like it is, it's... And people are starting to watch this station, trying to get as much information as they can.
Yeah. Alright, I like your answer so far, Scott. And if going this route here, that I just laid out, and you kinda go along with it, it's cheaper than paying somebody $70,000 plus thousands a year, plus benefits.
Benefits are almost tapping at the door, like $31,000.
Yeah, so, you're talking 100-plus. And that's a lot of money, and we can get the information out there.
And the department heads are responsible for their own information, too, you know? So, why have somebody handling it twice? And then, if they mishandle it and the date of a vote doesn't get out there on the proper time?
Yeah.
That's crucial, you know?
That's right. I agree. So, okay, that's... We're on the same page. I like that. Alright, now, the Selectmen's meeting, I don't think it was the last, or one before. Now, the town manager has objectives. Okay, so, the Select Board meeting, no discussion if he met his objectives. He brought the subject up, and no one raised any questions. Only Mr. Gito's question was, "I won't ask here. I'll knock on your office door and ask in private." Now, that doesn't sound good right there. And I, in the public, would like to know what the objectives were in a public forum. And I mean, this stuff sounds like it's all cloak and dagger, behind closed doors.
If something is put on an open agenda to be discussed, you don't let it pass and say, "I'm gonna go talk to him direct." Unless you had another idea that should've been inserted, that's one thing. But you could even say it in the open.
Yeah, that's right.
As far as I'm concerned, once it's out on the deck and it's there, and the chairman has put it in the agenda, then it's fair. There's other things that can come out on an agenda, too. Is if it's safety of the residents and being Street Water and Sewer Commission. We can bring up anything under that. We don't have to have it on the agenda. And you should have a lot of latitude. I don't... I wasn't getting a lot of latitude. I'd get shut down, but...
Yeah, I know.
I'm fighting for the residents, and that's... Certain stuff has to be spoken.
Alright, but you see where we're coming from?
Yeah.
This should've been open to the public to hear how things... If he met them, how he met them, you know, stuff like that. So, people on the Board can ask questions in the public. It makes it look like it's cloak and dagger in a back room. Alright, so, alright. Do we have a budget shortfall?
Right now? No. The budget was supposed to be balanced going to the Finance Committee. Otherwise, it couldn't have gone there. If the Finance Committee... There's a problem in the schools, but I think they fixed it. So, monies came... Monies came in to them to help them out. But I haven't seen a revenue sheet to show anything yet. That's... I mean, Bill Rowe used to put one out, and it would... But it would be what they call... It would say right on the top. I had a straightened people. It said estimated revenue. 'Cause a lot of it isn't locked in yet, you know? And I still don't think the state stuff is locked down yet.
No.
You could get more. But we went through it. We did the best we could. The town held at 3-8, and then, the schools got hit with some stuff that was...
Well, it's the illegal immigrants that's causing the problem.
It's breaking the backs of a lot of people. And when you hear Chicago's underwater...
There's a lot of programs the schools dropping to make this work, which I don't go along with. But his hands are tied. He has to do it by law, but there's other... to me, the town side...
And if you think they're gonna back us up with cash, don't hold your breath. Have you ever heard anybody come from the government and say they're gonna help you?
No.
No.
No, if they do, watch out for Ron.
Yeah. It'll be one of those new eighty-three thousand social security guys.
All right, why... okay. The next question is, why do we need one superintendent and two assistant superintendents in the water and sewer department?
We have superintendent public works.
No, not public works.
No, no. Then you have superintendent in water and sewer. He's... his own department now. It's not under public works.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. But he's got two assistant superintendents under him.
You only had... I don't know who's underneath them.
This is new. These are... this is new, that within the last couple of months, they hired some guy.
And I unfortunately wasn't there when they voted on the last budget. I was out plowing snow and sanding, so that was a bad night for me.
All right, but my feeling is, I mean, for all these years, we did it with one guy. Now we need three.
Yeah, but you know what? I'm gonna be honest with you. You got a hundred and twenty... a hundred and twenty-nine million dollar budget coming out. One guy can't do it all anymore because it's just too much going on. And it's the redundancy from the state and the federal government. Like, the water might be too much. Phil's a good guy. He knows his stuff. He's a good engineer. But I think when it comes to managing the whole thing, it's really bigger than one guy. But I don't know... I thought he was getting an assistant, not two. I think Jamie is a high-level secretary that's program admit too, which is...
All right, I'm gonna say originally I'd come out with two. That's what the town manager said. But when I looked at the budget, it's broken down to one guy, but he's getting seventy thousand from water and seventy thousand from sewer. So that's a hundred and forty grand he's getting. But I'm still going back to the original question. The department, same amount of water mains, the same amount of sewer mains.
Yeah, but it's... there's stuff they've... they come across our desk and I don't know why when we built Muddy Pond, that they didn't tell us this PFAS stuff was coming out. Here we get the key for the thing to take and put it online. And then the next week, we get a thing from the federal government saying, all your stations must be brought up to PFAS. So that was a hidden horror show. That was five million that croaked us.
All right, so I'll move on to the next one. Money saved from nine eleven going to Holbrook. How many years when the state stops giving Stoughton all this money?
Every town gets a certain grant, but it's not... it's gonna dwindle. This is our first time in the hole, so they sweetened the pie. I am gonna be honest. I'm gonna tell the people right now. I got an eighty-eight-page document from Chief Donna McNamara and Deputy Chief Brian Holmes. I spoke to Brian Holmes. He explained some stuff so I knew what the nine-one was, why it should have stayed in town. And I understand we're having troubles right now. So I don't know if it's bugs being...
But going to Holbrook?
Yeah. But not with Holbrook, but with the system. Some things on...
Yeah, but I mean, with the system, going to Holbrook, we're having trouble.
Yeah. And, you know, you don't hear it, but I mean, I was standing behind my two department heads that knew more about it than I did. Plus, I was worried about the employees that were there. But we were told, and I'm hearing different things, and it's the way I see it in another way, but I was told that it was a re... a regeneration of a department. And the town manager in the chart has that right to rearrange, regenerate departments as he sees fit. So we... town council said it was all right. It's his opinion, right? So one guy can't stop the world.
Okay, so... And all that money that we've generated from that, you know if that went into a stabilization fund or where it went to?
The money that's coming from that is going... five minutes. The money that's coming from that, from the grants, is gonna help the firefighters get everything into their building there to send stuff over there, the microwave units and all that, so that they can be in touch with that. It would have cost us, I think, eleven million, and we're gonna get nine, and it's gonna suffice from them. So it's...
Yeah, but also, the money in the stabilization fund is supposed to stay over twenty percent for...
You're not supposed to touch the stabilization fund. We put... when I was on finance committee, we all voted to put three hundred thousand from free cash right in there off the top. And then we were paying for stuff that wouldn't hurt the system by paying cash for things and not bonding others. So that's... you know, we try to help out that way.
Okay, the town manager, quoting him, hotel lost revenue... oh, let me read it the way I said it. Hotel lost revenue, town manager says, it's five hundred thousand from room tax. That might be... I think it might be low because hotels are a trifecta of revenue. You've got the room tax, food tax, liquor tax.
But there's a law that says you can't... you can only charge them up to a certain level. And then after that, that room tax locks in at that, like, level? Like, it's not for the whole year. There's something that I was told that it gets to that level, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
But I'm gonna tell you something, Peter.
Is that locking the liquor tax toll?
No, no, no.
No, okay.
Just that. But here's something to chew on. They willfully walked away from their licenses to be a hotel.
That's right.
Those hotel licenses were given in areas that weren't allowed and zoning board allowed it for them to go in. Now they see the greed of the migrants and all that. Then the idea of, you know, the town manager apologized for it. And I was gonna speak to him that we're in charge of the train station. We have care, custody, and control, the select board, over the train station. So only us can allow that to be used as something. And I'm not giving any more town resources out for this that we're gonna get promised money for. But when those people come in to get their new hotel licenses, we're gonna add up the money that was lost, and that might be where the licenses start.
Okay, we're running out of time. She's trying to keep me on track here. All right, illegal immigration. Stoughton should refuse anymore and send back the ones we have in town. We can't afford it. So what are you saying about that? Yes or no?
I'm not for any of it because you don't know who you have in your town. Some of them could be here with good hearts. My family and your family went through Ellis Island.
That's right.
Stoughton is not gonna be the Ellis Island in the drop zone because Mara Healy is got no oomph to tell them... here's the best thing. Start the sanctuary state. That'll put the brakes on, and then we deal with what we got.
We're not a sanctuary state. We're a right-to-shelter state.
Yeah.
We were two states out of fifty states. And the other state dropped out a little while back because it was costing too much money.
And Somerville wanted to be a sanctuary city. Now that guy's screaming and crying and he's over his head.
That's right. All right, so...
But I don't think we should take anymore. I don't think it's fair. We're the fifth town out of three hundred and fifty-one with the most people in it? The fifth? We're a town.
No, we're the first town and only town. The other ones are cities.
Right, the first town. But all the other ones are cities. When you are running side by side with Lowell, Lemonster, and Worcester, there's a problem there. What are we, easy?
Yeah.
No.
Well, it's like Brockton. We got... Brockton's got some more than we do.
Well, they're not... they get problems where they're within their own, so they're not gonna send more problems, probably.
All right, so, okay. We have a budget deficit. Well, till next year, more illegal immigrant families at Sinai Hospital. And we lose, and the loss is gonna be over a million dollars on real estate tax. How are we gonna handle that? What are they doing? You know what I mean? We're already a half a million dollars in the hole with the schools.
Well, we gotta... I'll tell you, there's a lot of projects that are gonna be put on the shelf because we're not gonna be able to get things off the ground. And it's just... I think we gotta get together with some towns and fight this stuff. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And show... draw a line in the sand because nobody's doing it for us. They just keep funneling them down.
No, the town... no town's gonna fight because no town has the problem we have. It's up to Stoughton to do its own fight and get out of this friggin' mess. Okay, so next year, the budget's gonna be tough because we're gonna be short a lot of money. We're half a million dollars low on a school this year, and next year it's probably gonna be a million dollars short in the school plus over a million dollars just in the Sinai Hospital on real estate tax. But...
Thirty seconds.
We have all kinds of money for new jobs we don't need. That's in the schools, too. All right, Scott. Thanks for coming on the show.
Thank you, Peter.
Good luck in your reelection.
Yep.
And I liked a lot of your answers, so...
I just hope everybody gets out and gives me another chance to represent them because I listen and I hear what people are saying. And that's why I stand up at the meetings and I say what I gotta say. Sometimes it comes across a little rasher than some people wanna see it. But a good friend of mine, his mother always said, "The truth only hurts if it should." So please give me a chance to represent you again. I'm a lifelong resident and I know exactly. I've been in town meeting since eighty-eight, Peter.
Okay, ciao, as we say in Italians. I'd like to welcome my third guest here, Steve Gavi... Gavi, I'm sorry.
Kavy.
Gavi, all right. He's sitting on the board of selectmen right now and he's running for reelection. And so, welcome to the show, Steve.
Thank you very much, Peter. Thanks for having me.
And I'm gonna start off like I did with the other shows. In Stoughton, we have a whole lot of nepotism going on. All right, there's five new jobs. What are they? And I hear they're made for specific people. And do you think this is right?
So the jobs you're referring to, I'm actually not even aware of which jobs you're referring to. In general, nepotism's unacceptable. So for that, it's kind of easy to answer.
Well, all right, I'll keep going down the line then. Okay, I assume you know all five.
I don't. I don't know which jobs you're referring to.
Who they are all connected to?
I really don't.
So you don't know who they're connected to?
I'm not involved in the hiring.
All right, so we... this is all out in the street. Everybody knows about this. Okay, we have a new person in centralized purchasing and... which is a job created for a specific person. And I don't think we need it because friends have been doing a fantastic job all these years by itself, basically. And the second one is wellness and fitness. Are you aware of that one?
No.
Are you sure you're on the board of selectmen?
The daily operations of the town falls into the jurisdiction of our town manager, not the select board.
All right. The third is truth and information. New town website so the public can go find what's going on in town. Now, are you aware of that one?
Yes, I've heard that that position was created.
Good or a bad idea?
To have somebody involved in communications?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's been one of the primary complaints of citizens in the town, something that we've addressed, that we've discussed as a select board numerous times. And one of the things that I find, you know, there was a time when you only could get information from a handful of sources. You can get it from a newspaper, the news at five or, you know, eleven o'clock at night and... or, you know, just by actually showing up and asking somebody. We no longer have those sort of limited channels of communication. Now we have a thousand apps, you know, a million different sources of information. And it's very difficult to know what channel to send information to get it to the people who need it. And that's been a problem. You know, we've had meetings where people have said they didn't know. They felt like there was a lack of transparency from the board. But the board has made every effort to try to be as transparent as possible. And so getting somebody who can help us make sure that we're connecting correctly and well with the communities, I think, essential for the town. I know that, you know, how we do that exactly, specifically, how that's done is worthy of debate. I know people who have... who work and are associated with the town, our library, have expressed an interest in getting involved because they are already a, you know, an area where people come for information. They have the skill set for it and some of the, you know, operational experience with communications. That would be good, but also if there's people who disagree with that, I think we ought to have a communications director similar to the schools.
All right, so we gotta... we can't talk too long on these questions. But anyways, don't we have somebody who's already in charge of tech that gets all the information out there?
We do not have a central person whose responsibility is communications.
Yeah, we do. Well, I'm taking a senior moment. She's in charge of all the technical stuff.
So, yeah, we have an IT head of IT.
Yeah, IT, yeah. She's been putting all the information out there, and I think she does a good job.
She does.
Okay.
Trish is fantastic.
Yeah, that's right. See, okay. Now, I myself, I don't think we need this job. But here, just to add on to that question, wouldn't it be cheaper to let the town folks know what's going on by Facebook, Stoughton News, Stoughton Enthusiast, Town Crier, Suburban Shopper? Let's say it costs $12,000 a year, $1,000 a month. All department heads do a weekly show on SMAC. So each department, that's the library, the engineering department, the town clerk, the assessor, whoever's out there, and put out all that information that everybody has to know and what changes from time to time. It'd be cheaper than paying seventy thousand-plus benefits a year. I mean, it's a lot of money for somebody... I can't even picture how this person's gonna work full-time to do this information, especially when you get it out there for free. So what do you think?
Well, all of the things you describe are things that you're currently doing. And we are also getting complaints that we're not communicating well enough. So if the question is, do I feel like that what we're doing is enough right now? I've already heard pretty clearly from the general public that we aren't. So I think we need to find some other solution for communicating. It's really critical that people be able to engage their government.
All right, so what...
And I take that as a pretty serious responsibility.
All right, so what you're saying is you're in favor of this seventy thousand-plus benefits to be a hundred thousand dollars a year for this new position?
Well, the operations of the town, once again, fall into the town manager. I have some ideas about what the strategy should be for this. I'm one person. My opinions...
Well, don't you guys work on a budget when it comes up for this?
Correct, correct. And this is a problem that we've identified. And as far as solutions go, having somebody for the number you quoted is not, I believe, outrageous, especially because it's a significant problem. There might be other ways to solve it, and I can't really necessarily say they would have been cheaper or better necessarily. And that's an operations decision that, you know, I'm willing to take a chance on, see if we're able to succeed with it. If we're not, then we find another path.
Okay. Town manager objectives.
Yes.
Couple of meetings back, I watched. Selectman's meeting, no discussion if he met his objectives. He brought the subject up and no one raised any questions. Only Mr. Gito's question was, I wanted to ask him, I'll knock on your office door and ask in privacy. What the hell is that? I mean, that... I, in the public, would like to know what the objectives were in a public forum. So why aren't these, this whole thing... it makes it sound like everything's done cloak and dagger in a back room between the selectman and the town manager. Because nobody wants to discuss it in a public forum.
Are you referring to the town manager's evaluation?
Yeah, he met his objectives.
Yeah, it's all written and it's a public document. It's available to anybody who asks for it. I think it's even published on the website.
Yeah, well, that's fine, a lot of people don't do that. So they listen to it in public and hear it being spoken. I mean, everybody's talking about being open, then this, this subject of his objectives should've been discussed in public, and then Mr. Gito wanna, didn't wanna ask any questions publicly, he wanted to do it privately. It just doesn't look good.
And I think it's a matter of style. We, we evaluate, we evaluated the town manager on all of his, all of his objectives, as well as additional criteria that are general and are true year over year. For example, you know, timely submission of a town, of a town manager, town manager's budget, coordination with, with boards and committees, stuff like that. And ranked them on a scale of, of one through five. Those scores were then, then weighted and tallied. We could leave comments on any of those issues. Some people left copious comments, and some people left fewer. And we had this all documented in writing and available for anybody who, who needs it, and I think it's available on the town website.
Okay, we gotta, we gotta get moving, we're running out of time here.
And the town manager's Facebook page, I think he was also posted there.
We gotta be a little quicker with the answers. Do we have a budget shortfall, yes or no?
No.
Okay. Why do we need one superintendent and two assistant superintendents in the water and sewer department? Yes or no, and why?
Well, the, yeah, so the management of the, of the water department, it's, it is a complex, complex operation. We also have unusually talented group of people, but they, this is, this is, has been something that we've dealt with in the past. This was when Robin Grim was here, she separated off the water department from the rest of DPW because of the size of the operation, really warranted a separate, having it as a separate department.
What are you saying, she?
This was when Robin Grim was our town manager.
Oh, you're gonna shoot these answers, because we got ten minutes, not even ten minutes left.
Okay.
And I gotta give you a couple of minutes to talk about yourself. Hotel lost revenue, town manager says, "We lost five hundred thousand dollars from room taxes that might be low, hotel trifectas in tax revenue, room tax, food tax, liquor tax." So maybe he's just talking five hundred thousand dollars in room tax, but the liquor tax, I don't know if that's included in that. What do you say? Scott?
I'll do my best. That has, has to do with the fact that our hotels right now are being used by the state to house migrants, and the state has, is, my understanding, is that the state has communicated to the hotels that they don't have to pay those additional hotel receipts that would normally go to the, to the town. And that, I think that's where that number comes from. Our town manager, with my one-hundred percent support, has reached out to the governor asking, "How do we recoup those costs?" That, we depend on them, in addition to the fact that we have no available hotels because they're being used for the migrant crisis. We also lose the revenue from, from the receipts, and we have additional costs in both schools and, and public safety that, for it, as well as libraries. I think that, that many, many people feel very comfortable with the idea of helping out, but we, we need the resources to do it, and the state needs to help provide those.
All right, illegal immigrants. Stoughton should refuse anymore and send back that we have right now, the town can't afford it. Yes or no? What do you think? Can we afford this? No.
Well, there's several approaches that can be taken. As far as the migrants, I mean, I'm not aware of anybody being...
They're illegal, they're illegal migrant, immigrants, they're not migrants, they're not legal.
I'm not, well, for someone to be illegal...
They crossed the border, they didn't come through, oh, Jesus. I'm drawing a senior moment here. Immigrations and customs, okay. Sorry.
Well, so if we're gonna call people's activities illegal, that is gonna have to go through the courts. I'm not aware of any court cases having deemed these activities, they're actually illegal. So for the benefit, sort of, for my own understanding of it, I'm not going to accuse people of crimes when I don't know it. What I can say is that we do have migrants, and, and that that is, in fact, a very expensive cost to the town, very, very high cost to the town. Can we afford it? No, absolutely, we cannot, without additional aid from, from the state. As far as shipping people away, I, I'm not sure if that is legal, and I do not wanna say that I would like to commit a crime.
Okay. This is my idea, have the state school illegal immigrants at the hotel and hire state teachers to educate them, on-site, it won't cost us any money. Is it a good idea or a bad idea?
To hire, we...
Have them, have the state, the state's shoving them down our throat. Have the state hire teachers paid by the state to go to the hotels and teach these illegals at the hotels, and pay for the full education, so it doesn't cost us a penny.
Yeah, so as of right now, the state has not provided us with the, with the money that's promised.
Yeah, but that's not what I'm, I'm asking, you think that's a good idea? Have the state take over the education, let them pay for it, not us.
Yeah, it's, it's something that has merit. If, if this was raised to me as a suggestion, I would bring it to Town Council to see if it was, if it was legal, as a step one. So before I say it's a good idea, I'd like to know if that, if that's even allowable by law.
Well, some states have done away with this, and we're a right-to-shelter state, and there's only two in the whole fifty United States. Massachusetts is one of them. And the other state dropped out because they couldn't afford it, and we're the only one still with this right to shelter. And the right to shelter was designed not for illegals, it was designed a few years back when there was a lot of homelessness, and which there is still is today. It's for us, not for illegals. Now, the next question I have is, we have a budget deficit now. Wait till next year, more illegal immigrants, families at Sinai Hospital, and lost over one million dollars on real estate taxes. How are you gonna handle that? We're already, the schools are already a half a million in deficit with the students they have now. I got that last night at the Town Finance Committee.
That the, the schools are currently in a half a million dollar deficit in the current year?
Yeah, because of the migrants, immigrants, illegal immigrants.
So the question is, how do we pay for something that is too much for us to pay for?
Yeah, next year, we're, we're gonna have a bigger deficit, because we're losing a million dollars, over a million dollars on real estate tax from the Sinai, and the state's gonna load up the Sinai with migrant families. And that's gonna put more pupils, if we're half a million dollars with the ones we have now, next year, we're gonna be a million or better in the hole with the immigrants, the illegals, plus we're losing over a million dollars in real estate tax.
Yeah.
So we're gonna be in a big bind because of this.
Yeah, if we continue to do this, this is not sustainable. We absolutely have to, to work with our state delegation, our representatives, our senator, the governor, lieutenant governor, to, to rectify this, and just to make it really clear that this is not something that we are able to sustain. And it comes at a detriment to the town, and we want to be able to express that we have some rights and interests here that, that require their attention. If this is something that we're gonna be doing, we need, we need the funding to do it.
I'm gonna say one thing, then I'm gonna let you close, we're running out of time here. Some, in Illinois, some towns have, government of them, they don't want them because they can't afford them. So there's, there is a way to do it without going out and collecting ten thousand signatures to get it on a referendum for the whole state to vote on. And Martha's Vineyard had a plane load land in the middle of the night, the next morning, they put them on boats and shipped them to the mainland, Cape Cod. So it can be done, without going to court and all that stuff. Stoughton has to get aggressive, that's the whole problem, we are not being aggressive. That being said, you can answer that, or you can spend the rest of your time talking about yourself.
Well, you know, I, I'll, I'll do my best to kind of like do a little bit of both.
Both, yeah.
I know, I don't wanna disrespect, show any disrespect here.
No, I appreciate, do what you're gonna...
I think that, I often tell people, I'm not, not really a very good politician, the fact is, it's not really how I see myself. I'm not here to, to, it's a career, this is something I do because I, I live in a community that I love, with people I care about. I wanna make sure that, you know, my friends, family, neighbors get the best that they can. I've been really blessed to have great educations, some good experiences, professional experiences that put me in a position to be able to do that, I think, well. And I've been doing it for six years, I think that people can judge, judge me on my, on my history in this, in this role. I hope they do. And I hope that they'll continue to see that I'm, I am doing my best to advocate for everyone, and, and to help find resolution to conflicts wherever they exist. With regard to, to the issue you bring up, it's both true that this is not sustainable, and that, that this is harmful to the town, and also that we are, in fact, talking about human beings who have rights also, and, and to try to find some way to be compassionate, but also prudent and, and responsible. And that is always, you know, a challenge, especially when, when you're, when you're doing it just as, as a family, if, if you know somebody who's on hard times and you, you will, you know, have them stay at your house, a spare room, or on the couch, that's one thing. When you're asking an entire community of people to all find consensus and agreement, that, that is very, very difficult. So it's a needle, we try to thread as best we can, and I, I hope that...
Well, we're done.
My experience on the board, my record shows that I, that I'm sincere about that. Peter, thank you very much for taking the time to, to have these interviews. I really genuinely appreciate it.
Thank you for coming on, Steve, I really appreciate it. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Leave the glass. Take the cannoli.